Okay. I will call the regular city council meeting of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. Uh, let's say the flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's do the roll call.
Mayor Allison.
Eric.
Tom Baylor.
Eric.
Kathy Sherman is absent. Jeff Gard.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
Kristen Carpenter.
Here.
And Ken Jones.
Here.
That is a form of council.
Okay, next is the approval of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, is this a yes or no?
Uh, you can say if there's no objection.
If there's no objection, the agenda is approved. Um, any conflicts of interest or expertise communications that need to be disclosed?
Uh, I'm a booth member, does that matter?
I don't think you have a financial.
No.
Just, I guess, discounted years.
Maybe they have an interest in their numbers.
Yeah. Um, okay, so no conflict, I mean, I don't look up, yeah, okay, no conflicts of interest. Uh, communications by and petitions from visitors. Do we have any guest speakers tonight?
No, not tonight.
Any audience comments regarding agenda items? Great, come on out to the mic, say your name, address.
Sorry.
Hello, my name is Emma Merritt, I live at five oh six Sunnyside Drive. Um, I'm, I'm here to let the council know, share with the council in person some of the great news that we've received this month at C E C. Um, power cost equalization is a program run by the state to equalize power costs between rural, excuse me, from rural areas to rail belt or on the road system costs of electricity. So, um, we've been trying to get the Cordova Center approved for four years now, and that was finally successful, and we had a big over fifty thousand dollar credit on the city's electric bill as a result of that. And the city can, um, expect to have higher P C E reimbursements now moving forward, having that, um, having the Cordova Center approved. So I wanted to share that good news with you, my letter is in the packet as well. Um, P C E is really important to Cordova Electric, to our, to our residents and to our community as a whole. So we spend a lot of time advocating for P C E, and so we invite the council to also advocate for P C E at the state level when you're setting your legislative priorities. Um, and last, I wanted to invite all of the council members who are also Cordova Electric members to our annual meeting. It's in person here at the Cordova Center on Monday. It starts at five, we'll have light appetizers and a few informational and educational booths. Um, and the business meeting starts at six thirty, and we have some substantial prizes, a electric bike, a new washer dryer set, and a thousand dollar bill credit. So, um, I hope to see you all there, thank you.
Thanks.
Helen and I saw that fifty thousand dollar savings we signed a check today to C E C. I mean, their regular monthly bill.
Um, any other audience comments regarding agenda items? Um, just for the folks online, we have one audience member, Emma Merritt, and her daughter, I'm assuming, and then a couple city staff members here as well. Um, any chairpersons or representatives of boards and commissions? Is, um, anyone from C C M C A, uh, board directors online?
No.
School board?
No, it's pretty rare.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the approval of the consent calendar.
I will take the roll if nobody's pulling anything on the consent calendar. Jeff Gard.
Yes.
Ken Jones.
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter.
Yes.
Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman is absent, Melina Meyer.
Yes.
And the consent calendar is approved.
Okay, um, next the approval minutes, they're in the consent calendar. We have no consideration of bids, proposals, or contracts, so now we have reports of officer. Uh, Mayor, do you have a report?
All right, hold on a moment, thank you.
Uh, City Manager.
Okay, thank you. Um, a few things, just want to let you know that on the financial side, um, we are within inches of finalizing some new accounting software to provide solutions to our continual problem with getting up-to-date accounting of where the city is. So, um, we're looking forward to that. That will be implemented, um, for the new fiscal year of January twenty-four, but it's a long process, and in a previous meeting you did approve, um, the transition costs. So, we will start that process here within the month. Um, audit will be conducted in the very early parts of May, um, and we're actively preparing for that. Um, you met, uh, Gavin Schultz at the last meeting. He spoke about the city's financial position a little bit, and the work he's doing on our behalf to, um, help get our, um, financial systems in order. Um, and he is assisting with the audit prep, so we're looking forward to a clean audit, and we'll have those statements to you, council, um, much earlier than normal. And, um, we will have a more up-to-date financial statement at the next meeting, but we do have a financial update through the end of January, um, that gives you a sense of how we're tracking the budget. It also shows prior year actuals at the same time period, and again, we are, are tracking well with that. Um, next is sales tax code revision. Um, our attorney is working in earnest to bring our sales tax code, um, up-to-date and, um, eliminate some of the conflicting language and inconsistencies and confusing language. So we'll, um, have a work session on that, um, probably not in April, but maybe early May. And then the final thing is, with all the snow that we were hoping we wouldn't be getting, um, there's been a lot of concern about snow plowing, and we are going to be publishing, um, the snow plow schedule so that folks can anticipate when, um, their streets might be plowed and what the prairies are. So those are things that are underway, um, and Tony just shared with me the, uh, snow plowing schedule for the harbor docks and, um, and hopefully that will eliminate some of the questions that are out there about how, how we prioritize roads and how, um, how often the snow is removed, and what time the road removal process starts. Um, I've had a few calls from people who were concerned about the early start with, you know, heavy grumbling equipment and the beep-beep of backup, um, uh, notice, notification on the, the equipment. So, um, we'll have all that out there for the public to consume and understand, and hopefully that will release some of the questions that are out there. And, uh, that's it for me, thank you.
Um, are there any comments, uh, on the manager report? Anyone online? Okay, City Council.
Um, perhaps you've all heard from people about, um, assessment notices that are out, and we, we had all talked about it, and I put it in the packet last time, just about that there were going to be some substantial increases, so we've been hearing from people. Um, but it's all been good. Um, Tammy at the front desk, and Tina, and I've been answering some questions, and, um, people are receptive, and they're, you know, been mostly respectful and nice and kind to us. Um, with the new system, it's been really easy to PDF their property card and send it right to them in an email, so that's been helpful. Um, and, and just one quick, if I could say one thing, it would be that, um, the language on an assessment notice is such that it, it talks about land value, improvement value, and total assessed value. And years ago, we had changed our previous notices, the ones that Tina and I made ourselves, like in a Word doc, um, to say buildings instead of improvements, because that would kind of, you know, be misunderstood by people occasionally that, ah, we've made no improvements, why'd it go up fifty thousand? Um, but improvements are really any, I just wrote it down, buildings and other, um, permanent improvements on the web. So, it, I can see where people would misunderstand that, which is fine, and we've explained it to people. I might try and change that language, this new system already had a assessment notice in there with that word. So, uh, that's one of the ways people are, you know, saying that that's a reason. However, we also put a lot of language on the back of the assessment notice, and we pored over it and really paid attention to it in hopes that it would answer a lot of questions before they got to us. Um, and, and mostly, I would say, if people are appealing their residential home, if it's their residence, um, you have to provide, if, if the burden of proof is on the appallant, and, and you should do some research and provide any evidence that you can to support that the assessed value that we've given you, that the assessor has given you on your property, is not fair market value. So you can research other homes in the area, or, um, bring up, you know, maybe concerns about your home as to why it wouldn't sell for that amount. But do a little bit of research, and you can't just, you, you can put in the appeal with just one sentence that said, "It's too hot or too much in one year," but we'll send it back to you and say, you know, do a little more research, you have to explain your reasons, and, you know, why is this not fair market value for you, for your property? So, uh, I think that's about all I wanted to say about that. Um, the, uh, election obviously went off really well, um, very small turnout. Uh, we may have about fifteen ballots to count next week, uh, not enough to make a difference. Um, and, and then we're going to have a special meeting, uh, at noon on the twenty-second, which we may have a couple of extra things to throw on it also, which would be okay. That's kind of helpful to do. And I think that's it, I can answer any questions about any of that.
Any questions for the clerk? Anyone online?
Anything, I'm calling.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, well, on the appeal, as well as the person who wants to appeal, they have to have a reason, but I think you should make clear to the community that you guys are basing these prices on, on long information. You've got comps, you're just not pulling the number out from the I D.
Uh, Tom, you're pretty muffled sounding, we're having a hard time understanding you.
Tom, I think your, your question was, um, that the numbers that we put forward are based on data that we have researched and identified as being, um, what's selling here and at what cost, is that kind of your question?
Yeah, that was my comment actually. It's exactly that, but these numbers, they're just pulling them out, yeah, they got their research done. Okay, oh, I didn't call you.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, that is true. Um, we do that, um, sales ratio for the state assessor for that report every summer, and the assessors give us, I mean, it's very calculated and very, uh, you know, median mean coefficient of something or whatever, it's all very technical, but it's on actual sale prices that they are able to get. State of Alaska is a non-disclosure state, one of very few actually left, so it's not easy to get actual sale prices, but when they can, those are the ones we use.
Any other comments to the clerk? I guess, can you remind me when board of equalization is scheduled?
April seventeenth, and last day to appeal is April seventh. Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, we've got a couple things of correspondence in the packet. We have the letter from Cordova Electric Cooperative regarding the P C E credit. We have a letter from Sheridan Alpine Association regarding infrastructure improvements, and a public agency review notice for the aquatic farm site lease for Rachel Hoover. Uh, any, any comments on correspondence? Uh, yes.
I just had a question about the, um, P C E credit. So the fifty thousand credit, is that kind of making up for the past four years? Like the, the time that you've been trying to apply?
That's my understanding, is that they've funded previous years as well.
So.
It won't be fifty thousand next year.
Yeah.
Or monthly. Initially, I thought it was going to be that monthly.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Um, thank you. And, um, I just had a question about the Sherb- Sheridan Alpine Association letter. Um, is there a possibility, and I, maybe I'll bring this up at pending agenda, that we can form a committee to meet with Sheridan Al- Alpine and talk about, um, possibilities, a big chunk of money, but important infrastructure that we need to fund? And I, I'd be willing to serve on a committee, and just was wondering, and I'm sure there's that a few too, so.
We start with a workshop?
Yeah, or a workshop.
One of the things, um, we were thinking, because the ski hill is a city-owned asset, and there's all the equipment on that, is that we should be, um, having that discussion when we do our capital, um, workshop that we have planned.
Okay.
So we'll gather the information and we'll bring it to you, because it's a capital asset and it's something that we need to be considering as part of our infrastructure. So, um, if, if that seems like a reasonable place to do that, um, at least we'll get it on the table at the capital workshop where we discuss all the city's assets.
Sure, good start.
Thanks.
Any other comments on correspondence, anyone online?
Yeah, I had one on the deal.
Yep, go ahead, Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, but there's so much funding, there isn't there not obey that the Key Hill Coalition law can get grants, and it's not, what do they need to do to change their station so they can do that? That's in the city for a million dollars, that's, that's a lot of money, there's some money out there they can get.
Yes, and I think, I, I know that Kathy Sherman and I both met with them, um, probably.
Two years.
Two years ago, um, and we've offered to help them, um, change their I R S designation so that they can qualify for more, um, private funding. Um, and, uh, you know, I know they're a volunteer-run organization, but probably something we need to have a conversation about and encourage them to do that, because I think they're leaving money on the table. Uh, but that said, as a city asset, um, we can apply for funding to make improvements. Um, so we'll just have to really sit down and think through how we want to handle these capital assets.
Okay, any other comments on correspondence? Okay, um, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. So, resolution zero three dash two three dash zero eight, a resolution of the council of the city of Cordoba, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a sole-source contract with Tyler Rental, Inc. for the purpose of purchasing a Genie Z forty-five slash twenty-five man lift for the city of Cordoba.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, Councilmember Carpenter?
I am, um, putting the motion forward to it forward for the purpose of discussion, although it looks like staff, uh, I, I know that staff have done some research, and so, yeah, just thought we, there's a chance to go over that.
Councilmember Sherman, would you like to comment?
Um, I just think, um, I mean, I'm in favor of this, I believe this has been something that was needed for a while, so I would like to see us purchase it.
Any other council members have a comment online? Anyone like to comment? Oh, yeah, councilmember.
So, I'm going to be supporting this, but I, I do have a little bit of a question. It seems like anytime we're buying some lately is hard for funding, and I thought we had already expended all that, so.
This actually is on the list. We, um, you council did approve in principle the list, but we still have to go through our procurement rules, so this was approved for funding as a line item. Now this is the contractual, um, resolution that, um, satisfies our procurement code, which allows and authorizes this specific expense. So yes, and yes.
Any council members online like to comment? Okay, let's, uh, go to the vote.
Would you like me to do a roll call?
Sure.
It's up to you.
Yeah.
Um, okay, on resolution three twenty-three oh eight, Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Ken Jones.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
Jeff Gard.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
And Kristen Carpenter.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, and now we'll move on to resolution zero three dash two three z- dash zero nine, a resolution of the council of the city of Cordoba, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year lease with native conservancy for tract eight A, A S L S seventy-three dash thirty-five.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
And seconded. Uh, Councilmember Carpenter, would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. So I'm in support of the city manager entering into a lease agreement with the native conservancy. I think this is a great use of that property, it's got some sun, it's only allowed to be used for, uh, seasonal uses, and the more facilities we can have in town where people are working out how to grow food, I think is, is going to be toward that bit. And it looks like they have a cool, um, they've got a good plan for a hoop house, um, to get some passive tiller game, and they're talking about, um, working on composting and being very careful about how they're going to do that, and it sounds like they've got a plan for the electric fencing to keep pets out, and, um, it, it sounds to me like they've put a lot of thought into how they're going to do this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council, Councilmember Sherman, would you like to speak?
Um, yes, I, I, I think there's been a lot of thought put into this, and I think it's a good use of space that we know we can no longer build on permanently, um, safely. And so a seasonal use, and I think this seasonal use in particular is pretty good, and, yeah, it does get a lot of sun. So, um, I'm in favor of giving it a try.
Any other council members like to comment? We do have our city planner here, if you have questions.
I, I have a question for staff, I guess through the chair. How is the base rent calculated? Can you, can you describe that?
Yeah, it is, um, it is based on, uh, ten percent of the assessed value. That property has a very low assessed value because it's basically useless. Um, so I took the assessed value, uh, added the state multiplier to bring it up to, uh, quote-unquote, fair market value, and then, uh, did ten percent of that. So, in theory, we would get the full cost of the property recovered in a ten-year period.
And is that in line with what you've done on other city leases?
Yes.
I still think it seems low, but, thank you.
They also can only use it for like six months out of the year, so. But, uh, it is in line with how we've done things with, uh, at least with nonprofits, so.
Any comments or questions online?
Yes, Councilman Baylor.
Go ahead, Councilman Baylor.
Yeah, I brought this up while we were in the council, but I, and I think the wording is in the contract, I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, that this parcel won't be used for storing boats or campers or net fencing. Um, it, it's total purpose of the three house. And I think that's in the contract, I'm not sure how fair that is. Um, composting didn't need funds because that's simply their base. And I don't know if there's any contract that specifically holds now a seat for the fire that keep bears out of there, or if you're coming them into their neighborhood, or if it's just a handshake understood, I can make sure that's in the way. Also, if they're going to be running a generator, I don't know if there's any power, if they're trying to hook up, grow the electric power grid, if they need power. Um, I think that needs to be addressed too, you wouldn't want to have a generator running out there, a residential area like that. And then, of course, if somebody does decide to be a care taker there, that, you know, I would assume that would come back in pro perempt for that, and there's mandatory issues and other things, but. Um, I support, those are something I can, that's most addressed properly or not. But here comes the fact, thank you.
Um, yeah, so to speak to your first issue, um, item four A in the lease says the authorized uses. It limits the uses to, the premise shall be limited to temporary greenhouse, uh, hoop, uh, hoop house and garden, and storage of ancillary items only. Um, so any items not directly associated with the functions of what they're doing out there would not be allowed to, um, be stored on-site. So that should, uh, cover that concern. Um, as for the bear concern, um, in their, in their proposal, they do say that they will be installing bear fences. There is nothing in the lease that directly, um, requires that. Um, we do have nuisance, uh, laws and things like that, so I mean, if we don't want, uh, put something in the lease, we can always go that route if it becomes an issue. And as for generators, I mean, um, we do also have noise ordinances, so, um, you know, residents can just go out, you could go out in the morning, start a generator and let it run all day, and then as long as you turn it off at night, I mean, I don't know if we can, uh, limit this one specifically, but if that's a concern, we can definitely address it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, is there anyone else online that has a comment? Okay, uh, yeah, I think Councilman Baylor brought up some good concerns to just keep, oh, sorry, Council, Councilmember Sherman.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think I read in the proposal that they did talk about moving compact compost, um, would be away from the site and a little bit more secure location. Um, and I, I know that is an issue, but again, maybe that's something that will have to be revisited after we give this a shot, because I've had my compost taken down a few times.
Yeah, I'm seeing that there, all ingredients for making the misture soil and compost for veggies will be housed at the native conservancy property in a tool shed, but I don't know if that includes the, oh yeah, with the three compost tumblers, so.
Kind of secure, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I think this is a really good use of the, this piece of property. Great to have my locally grown produce in town. Uh, any other comments? Let's go to the vote.
Okay, on resolution three twenty-three zero nine, um, Ann Schaefer.
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter.
Yes.
Ken Jones.
Yes.
Jeff Gard.
Yes.
Melina Meyer.
Yes.
Tom Baylor.
Yes.
And Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, uh, no unfinished business, so now we're on to pending agenda, C I P list, calendar, and then the elected elected officials list. So, pending agenda. What do we have coming up?
So the only thing I have is that, is it just a week from today? I guess it is. A week from today, a special meeting at noon, the election board will count those last ballots, so I'll put out that packet probably on Monday, um, kind of with blanks in the resolution certifying the election, kind of do the same thing every year. Um, and then I think there's one other item, which was a bid, which was given to me timely, but I left out, so that'll be on there for sure, and I think Helen might have one other thing.
We're looking at alternative procurement, um, opportunity, and I'll bring that forward to you, um, at the special meeting, just to keep us rolling with some of the purchases that you agreed to do with the ARPA funds.
And.
Did we have any workshops scheduled? Did we have any workshops scheduled for the first meeting? We saw.
Not yet. We're, we're, we're kind of trying to get ourselves, get, make sure we have all the information that we need to have, um, uh, be able to have a perform discussion, so, um, I will know with early next week whether, whether we're ready for the early, first meeting in April or whether it'll move to the second.
Okay.
But we do at least have a refuse department report on bear strategies at the April fifth meeting. Sam is aware of that, I know. Um, and Jeff Gard, if you'd still be in attendance, please, on the special meeting. You know, you're still a member even at that meeting and when, when we certify the election. And then the certification of the election as well as Helen's, um, uh, evaluation, both require all of your signatures, so they'll be sitting in like all of the boxes in my office, so. Uh, when all of you who are out of town, when you get back to town, please swing in and, uh, sign those for me. Obviously not the certification yet, we're doing that next week. Um, and we kind of have two weeks between, which is one of those nice months, except we have the special meeting in between, which defeats it. But that's okay because look, it's seven thirty-three. Ann is kicking butt.
Uh, Councilman Carpenter?
I was just going to ask for the pending agenda. Is it okay to ask about things that we might be able to pull off of it?
Would be great with me.
So number five under A, I think that's kind of a long time holdover? Plan slash schedule for departmental site visits work session, state of the department reporting?
I, I agree, as long as I, I hear yeses and, and or see nods.
I think we've done a lot of work around the budget process and the capital improvement planning and things like that, so it just seems like, yeah. So that one, I think, it seems like it could come off. And then number eight, joint city council harbor commission meeting sometime during first quarter twenty twenty-three, has that been talked about?
I don't think we ever had one.
No, we didn't. I, um, was maybe going to change that to second quarter.
Okay. And then the work session on housing, I think somebody said that that was moved to the beginning of May? A workshop before?
Well, is that what we're going to do? I, I don't know. We kind of said April, then Ken mentioned.
I think we were working, what was your date? Cause.
Yeah, the second half of May, it works better for me.
Right, okay, great.
Okay, so I'm going to take April off and say.
And I think that worked better for Kevin too, because he had a full desk right in P and D P outdoor.
Yeah.
Does that, do you feel like we can put a date on it yet or not?
Um, I think we did at the last meeting.
I don't think we ever.
Maybe we didn't finalize it. I think there was.
Oh, I don't even have May in here.
Oh, yeah, May seventeenth.
Okay, is that it?
Well, that's a Wednesday, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah, May seventeenth is the third Wednesday of May.
So that's the second May meeting. Okay.
Well, first of all, it's the eighteenth, right?
Yeah, but I mean, there won't be going on.
But.
Maybe.
And we're looking at maybe an hour before the regular meeting.
Another thing we'd also discussed was maybe doing the special as a workshop during the lunchtime. I think that's what we agreed to do on that Wednesday maybe was a noontime thing, which would let folks who are fishing the next day at seven A M.
Still call in for the record.
Is there a water opener, does anybody know?
Oh, yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, right.
Now, now I'm going to have a tide book in. Left the appointed officials book and.
You have a tide book?
I, I don't.
I can show you, it's really good.
Okay, so that's what I'm changing it to, noon on May seventeenth.
Any other, anyone else have anything for pending agenda?
I, I did, um, want to add, um, the work session, which we'll also have around our sales tax code revision. Um, so we'll do that at some point that works for everybody to be announced.
Okay.
And then, um, you mentioned it, but I should mention it again, the April seventeenth Board of Equalization. We were considering having Holly in at, at some point coming up, probably for the sales tax work session, but I would maybe like her to be at that as well since possibly it could be a bigger one than we've had in a while. Not necessarily, but maybe. So anyway, it's at seven P M. because it's already advertised because it's mentioned in the assessment notice, so we can't change that date. It's in code.
Okay, um, anyone in the audience would like to participate? Okay, we'll move on to council comments. Let's start online. Let's see. Um, Tom Baylor, council comments?
Uh, no comment, but a question, are you hearing me better now?
Yes, you're much more clear.
Okay, you know, I, I have the wire to respect, um, and asking, you know, with the problem speaking, I guess, so thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, okay, councilman Jeff Gard?
No comments. Short switch tonight, I think.
All right, Melina Meyer, any comments?
Yes, I'm in state.
Mayor Austin, would you like to make a comment?
Sure, yeah, a couple. Uh, thanks for T E T for their efforts to give us a little bit more money on T E T, that's always appreciated. Uh, thanks to staff for the things they're doing and, uh, thank you for running the meeting tonight. And I have one thing that I forgot to mention that should have been in the manager's report, but, uh, Harbor Commissioner David Gleison contacted me last week and, uh, he is going to be able to, unable to serve both, uh, school board and to the Harbor Commission, so, uh, once we certify that, I actually will need to recruit one more Harbor Commissioner from, from the many applicants we've had, so, you see, I'll know that.
Great, thank you. Um, council member Sherman, any comments?
No, nothing in particular. I'm sorry I was late, but, um, there was a great, uh, mariculture, uh, story on NPR. I don't know if anybody saw it. It's on the last of Public Radio. Um, it basically focused on the folks down in Sika, but, um, it was a pretty nice long piece, um, so I encourage anyone to go and look at it and, um, it, uh, Alaska Public Media is getting quite a bit of, um, showtime on NPR this week.
Thank you. Um, council member Carpenter?
No comments, thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, uh, thanks everybody for coming out tonight and, uh, appreciate C E C's work on the P C E, that's pretty awesome news. Um, as far as the mariculture topic, I'd just like to, you know, on the record, uh, urge any future applicants and existing applicants to reach out, see if you prior to submitting their D N R application because there is potential for conflict between sane areas and mariculture areas, in particular, the one that was on the agenda tonight is right in a common and prominent sane set, so, um, I want to support them and them to be successful. I just don't want there to be unneeded conflict, so, uh, plenty of water out there where we can all coexist and profit. Um, as far as the ski hill, I appreciate the, uh, ski club putting in that letter. Um, yeah, the numbers kind of shocked me, but I definitely agree, we need to be maintaining the city infrastructure and so I look forward to continuing that dialogue as we move forward. And, yeah, thanks for running the meeting. Council member Schaefer? Or Chair Schaefer today, so.
Acting Vice Mayor.
Acting Vice Mayor, there we go.
Longest standing council member, that's how I picked.
It's such a mouthful doing the council member and then last names.
So, yeah, thanks.
Um, my other comments are, um, thank you to everyone who ran and stepped up to fill positions during the election and then also to fill the positions on the, the boards that we approved tonight and hopefully someone from that list of people who applied for the Harbor Commission will be interested in, um, filling that spot. So, yeah, just thanks everyone who is stepping up and participating and that's all. Thank you. Uh, last motion.
Move to adjourn.
Adjourned.